Go start the stream as well. Good evening, everybody. This is the Monday evening, May 3rd, 2021 regular school board meeting. It is 6:01 and I will call this meeting to order. The first item of business is to take roll call. Mr. Bryant is excused this evening. He will not be joining us. Ms. Buck?
Here.
Mr. Derrick?
Here.
Ms. Ostenhorst?
Here.
Ms. Tower is running late from a work commitment and will be joining the commentary. Ms. Tiff?
Here.
And Cher is here. We'll go ahead and rise and share the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Derrick is going to share our mission this evening.
The mission of the repping public schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens.
Mr. Derrick? The agenda is in our board packet. Does anybody have any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
If I would like to delete the item about MOUs with the new service.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda? All right, seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda minus number, business item number four with the MOUs. So, motion made by Anna?
To second.
Second by Jennifer. Any other changes or comments? All right, seeing none, then we will begin our roll call vote with Ms. Ostenhorst.
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick?
Aye.
And Cher both ayes, so that passes. Five, zero. All right. Next on our agenda is just to call your attention to the educational plan, which I very much always appreciate having a very large version of that here in our space at the IMC at the high school, but it's always in your agenda packet as well. Next item on the agenda is recognitions and upcoming events. Does anybody have anything that they would like to share?
I do. Coming up next week is the Spring Musical. It's called the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee, and there will be four performances on the 13th and the 15th will be one cast. And then the other two days on the 14th and the 16th will be a different cast. So, tickets are on sale right now. At the, you need to call Lisa Banks at the activities office to purchase tickets for those performances. So, we are looking forward to seeing that. The kids have been working very hard on it.
Thank you.
And it is Teacher Appreciation Week, so just want to say thank you to all of the teachers who, especially this year and last year, have put in a lot more time and effort and stress and everything than they probably ever expected to have to do.
Other recognitions, upcoming events? I have just a few that I wanted to highlight. This school is going to have an onsite COVID vaccination for students and staff only this Thursday, Friday, May 7th, 8:50 to 10:50 here at the high school. So, that's just for students and staff. Kindergarten, there's going to be a kindergarten registration meeting coming up on May 6th at Burnside, 5 to 7. And also, I want to make sure to call all your attention to the fact that there's a new spring/summer community ed and recreation brochure. There's some wonderful happenings going on in our community this summer, so I encourage you all to take a moment to check in and see what kinds of classes you can sign up for. There's a lot of, a lot of great things in there, so thank you to them. Also, a prom is coming up for our juniors and seniors, I believe. Not sure exactly who is, for seniors for sure, and their guests. And that's Saturday, May 22nd. There will, it is outside and the grand march will be outside, if I understand it. And then, of course, we have to start talking about commencement. That's going to be Friday night, June 4th, 7:00 PM here in the high school. I really plans our port outside.
Yes.
Yes, so more information to come on that. And I just also wanted to remind everybody on our school website, just on the main page, there is a calendar link. And if you check on that calendar, you can see all sorts of things happening in our district this week, who's playing where, what kinds of activities are happening in our schools. And so, more information is on that along with our e-news that comes out on Sundays. But if you're a member of our community or a parent and you just don't know what the calendar looks like this week, that's a really great place to see everything in one spot. And with that, any, any other recognitions or upcoming events? Seeing none, then I will move on to our public comment time. I do have two people here for public comment this evening. I will read our guidelines and expectations for public comment. We expect that comments be limited to three minutes per person and that a representative be selected to speak on behalf of a group of individuals. School board members will listen to public comment, but will not discuss the topic at the meeting. The superintendent or the, and/or the board chair may provide a response outlining steps the school district has taken or will take to address the concern. And then, we expect that comments remain respectful, inappropriate, and not identify any current or former students, their families, or staff members by name. And so, I will call on our, our first, Mr. Will.
Just good right here? All right. All right. Okay. All right, we're good. All right, so I'm Zach Will. Dear School Board members of ISD 256, we, the Jefferson teachers and staff, want to give you an insight into our experiences this year. Despite the general narrative for all of us, this has been our best year of teaching. The pandemic brought out the best practices and helped our ability to be flexible while enjoying our profession each and every day. Let us tell you why. We love having K-6 grades in one building. It has allowed us to interact on a whole new level as a staff, PLC, and with our students while following all COVID protocols. Our total staff is hyper-focused on our students' mental health and their social, emotional learning. Not just our teachers, our custodians, paraprofessionals, office staff, all greet the students by name and check in with the students to be sure that what we meet, that we meet the kids where their needs arise. Our student success stories. We have many who have a history of behavior, behavior issues, who have had 180-degree turnarounds, students with speech concerns who did not speak up, who we can't keep quiet now, students who have a sense of true belonging, who are practically, who we practically have to shove out the doors at the end of the day. Success stories of our students this year are endless. Many of us were very reluctant to come to Jefferson at the start of the school year. With the end of the year approaching, we are all feeling reluctant to leave. This school year has breathed new life into many of us and gave us many reminders as to why we love what we do. As we've all worked with other great colleagues in this school districts, we have come together and taken the meaning of teamwork to a whole new level this year. We always put the needs of our K-6 students first and are always willing to help each other with anything. This educational mindset is hard to find, but us as a Jefferson teaching staff have come together as a group to improve the experiences of all within our building.
Thank you. And now, you're welcome.
Hi, I'm Mandy Stokes. We could stand here all night and tell you stories. Here is our ask. Will you consider keeping Jefferson open one more year? We know the reasons you voted in favor on January 19th of K-6 configurations with the possibility of Jefferson for the following school year. One, fluidity to change learning models due to changing dynamics of COVID. Two, time to plan for configurations for the 22, 23 school year. Three, possible savings in transportation. And four, continuity for families and students. Because we moved to neighborhood schools instead of grade-level centers, if you vote to close Jefferson, our students in grades 1 through 6, which is approximately 86% of our students, will be going to their third building in three years. We know the federal government has allocated COVID relief funds to states, the most recent being the largest. We are also aware that there has been strong community support with some access to different funding sources. We humbly ask that you look into combining these forces of good to make this happen. We are confident that our superintendent and administrative team would be able to bring a proposal to you that would allow this opportunity to have a small impact on the district's budget. We don't believe COVID is going away on June 4th or even September 7th. We respectfully ask that you sincerely take time to consider and discuss this request. We are all on Team Red Wing and will continue to advocate for our students, our community, and our schools. Appreciated. Zach Will, Drew Olenger, Delaney Schober, Tanisha Will, Mandy Stokes, Jordan Flynn, Michelle Swanson, Michelle Plonsky, Rachel Weiss, Tricia Perro, Erin Anderson, Carrie Lindstrom, Gail Miller, Christine Chandler, and Scott Bolt. Thank you.
Thank you, love. So, there might be some questions and answers and discussion then. So, we can go to the next topic in multiple person back to Jefferson.
And you're welcome to stay. Thank you. That is all that I have for public comment now at this evening. And so, the next item on our agenda is return to school. Superintendent Anderson and Shonda Jordan.
Let me just see if this on here. Not this time. We don't have any recommended changes in any of our COVID protocols, so I gave Shonda the, the option of not participating tonight. Once again, our latest COVID data sheet was updated about 30 minutes ago, so you can look at that information on the website. One thing that kind of struck me was the number of our youngest learners in the county who were positive for COVID. So, that's something we're looking at very carefully in the past over 30, 30, 30.
Carson, I hate to interrupt. Pam, I sent you a message. I can't hear you at all. I can, it's just like super tiny, low and muffled.
Holly, can you hear me now?
Yes, it's much better.
All right, I'll move up the table. Yeah, thanks for letting us know, Holly. I told Zach and Mandy, you know, look at the speaker when you're talking, and they did just that. And of course, then when I started talking, I looked right at the computer.
Yeah, no, I could hear them perfectly clear and then I'm like, wait, what am I missing?
Sorry.
Checking my volume.
So, the COVID data sheet is on our website, so please take a look at that. We update it every Monday after we have our weekly meeting with the county. There is a county vaccination survey that I'd like to send out to parents. You can see the suggested introduction to that survey. Again, it's at the request of Goodview County Health and Human Services, and they gave me a link and they'd like me to share it with parents regarding their plans for student vaccinations. It'd be conducted by the county and questions about the content and confidentiality of the survey would go to Jody Skeen at the county. So, again, before I sent that link out to parents, I just wanted to share that with you to see if there are any concerns. We won't be sharing our student data with the county, so there's no, you know, information will not be disaggregated by gender or by racial group or anything like that. So, I thought it would be okay, but I wanted to run it by you, just in case. COVID leave is a continuing topic. We have not received any guidance on COVID leave at this time. But Jack, last week Jackie reported that there were four staff members who have exhausted all of their sick leave for various reasons, and so they are taking some unpaid leave days at this time. There were two recent emails that were sent out to all board members, and I don't know if those two people are included in that list of the four that she reported. So, I'm kind of telling people there are four to six people who are in that situation right now. It's a concern for the HR department and, you know, I know for all of us. And so, hopefully, we can make that, hopefully, receive the guidance very soon so we can make a decision here at the board level. And again, I don't know when that guidance is, is going to come forth. And really, that's, that's all I have right now.
Any questions for the superintendent? Yes, Arlen.
Yeah, back to the survey here that the county wants to run and through our school district. I think if we're going to email how we're notifying our students or our parents this evening, we're going to apply a survey link to parents regarding the vac, plans for vaccinations. As far as that survey, I think we got to make very sure we stress that that is not a school's survey on the vaccinations. It is a county survey and it is totally optional. Put some stronger language that, that we're not gathering information on this as a school district. People understand it gets up really firm out there that this is something, if we're going to allow it as a board to happen, I think it's okay to give that information for people that want to volunteer it, but they need to know they don't, everyone needs to know they're not obligated to give that information.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good point. And I can easily add that to the internal paragraph.
Other comments or suggestions, questions? Anna?
So, what hall are we waiting for for guidance of that COVID leave? Just to clarify.
Yeah, the, the federal government issues guidance as far as, well, a number of items are related, related to COVID, but especially our COVID leave. And so, I'll give you an example. Can we change the, the timing of the leave? So, we'd want to have it retroactive to April 1st because the other leave, you know, ended on March 30th. But can we shorten it to June 30th? Can we shorten it to August 31st instead of September 30th? That's just one example of a variation that we may or may not want to do. And the reason that's so important is that, you know, there could be some significant funding, tens of thousands of dollars that could be in the balance depending on that decision. So, that's why we've waited this long before coming up with a proposal, but it's becoming increasingly frustrating because we still don't have the guidance and the leave could have been started as of April 1st. So, that's kind of why we're waiting at this time. I can certainly have Jackie give an updated, or some updated information on May 17th. I'm sure it would be nice to make a decision on that day, one way or the other. I just don't know if we'll have guidance by then.
I understand the, the reasons for waiting, but, you know, for the people who are affected, like, retroactive pay is great, but in the meantime, you have bills to pay, you know? And if you're missing out on five to 10 days worth of pay, you know, I just, I, the longer we wait on this, the more uncomfortable I am with that, just, you know, because I know how much that impacts people. And, you know, we have multiple staff members where, you know, both parents in the household may be school employees that, you know, if they end up having to quarantine, it could really seriously impact their family finances and single parents and, you know, even when there are two parents and one doesn't work for the district, like, it just, that's, I couldn't, you know, go for a week and not get paid, right?
And there are lots of reasons why, you know, people have exhausted their sick leave.
Right.
And, you know, every, every person's circumstance is different. You know, obviously, we want one, one rule that would impact everyone.
Right.
But, yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's definitely challenging, you know, when you've reached the end of the sick leave allotment, there's no doubt.
Jackie's actually in the queue. Maybe she can answer some of those questions we've had so far.
Hi, Carson hit most of it. As he was talking, I put my name in the queue early on so you'd know I was on the call. We are waiting. The IRS has not issued any guidance on the act yet. Neither has the Department of Labor. Because it's optional, the feeling is it is not high on their priority list to issue guidance. So, we're about almost two months out from when the act was signed and we have not seen anything around specifics. I mean, there's the, the guidance in the act, but usually there's specifics like, well, if this happens, this is what you do. And can we modify it? Do we have to implement it as written to get the tax credits? Those are the things we're waiting on at this point. A number of schools in our area are taking a risk in implementing variations. And I'm not sure if we want to go down that road if we don't know if the variations will be acceptable. For example, implementing it with a June 30th stop date instead of the September 30th stop date. Not issuing 10 new days and letting people use the remaining of their 10 original days. Those are just some of the variations that are out there right now.
Thank you, Jackie. Jennifer, you're in the queue, and then Arlen.
Thank you, Pam. I was just wondering if it would be possible to put together a plan by May 17th, even if we don't have all of the guidance? If we could at least discuss it as a board and have some sort of outline by Jackie and Carson that would give us an idea of what we might want to do going forward, even if we don't have all of the guidance there. I just, as I said in the personnel committee meeting earlier today, this is just something that's really been weighing on me. I think we need to do something for our staff as soon as we can. And waiting past May 17th, I just don't think that's acceptable. And I understand it's not completely in our control, but if we can at least keep it at the top of the agenda and have some, some plan that we can discuss, that would be great.
Arlen?
Yeah, I, I'd like some clarity on this when we get to that point. But one of the things that struck me is some of the COVID leave is so you can stay home to take care of your children because your, your request because of, we have class quarantine. And on the surface, it looks like, hey, that's the right thing to do, and I certainly want to be supportive. But it's not only school district employees that might have kids in that classroom if we quarantine the class. How does our local industries and other places handle a situation like that with COVID leave? I'm 100% behind taking care of staff. If they get COVID again or need COVID leave for themselves, but it's, it gets a little tricky in my mind thinking this through if they have a child that's not sick. It's a child that's just playing quarantine because we shut down the classroom because of quarantine requirements. And there's all kinds of people in our community that aren't teachers or school employees that have to react to that. So, how do we treat that? Now, I'll just leave it there. I don't have the answer. I'm not saying I'm against doing it either, but I just, there's two different things when it comes to COVID leave. Why is it because you're sick? Is it because your child's sick? I fully support that, but when it's just a classroom quarantine situation, how does that fit into it?
Holly?
I was going to say I completely agree with Jennifer. I would like to keep this on top of our priority list. Not, you know, because the state and the federal government doesn't have it doesn't mean Red Wing can't nor shouldn't. And, um, Arlen, in, I'm just, I just heard what you had to say. And A, if we had control of the whole community and their sick time, maybe we could, you know, do something to support them, but we don't have control over that. You know, each industry in Red Wing has control of how they allow their, you know, employees to have sick time. So, I don't know how that's relevant. We make the decision for our, our staff. And in all fairness, I wish it was that way for everybody else. And the other thing is, is I'm not on any other board, so I don't know what's happening there. They could be allowing them sick time and we just don't know about it. But I think the one thing we have control over is how we feel about our employees and their ability to do their job without having to worry about financial stress. And like Anna and Jennifer pointed out, back pay is great, but the mortgage is due that day. You know, and I know some places are allowing people to say, you know what? I'm on a, I, I'm out of sick days. I don't have time. But sometimes there's penalties. Sometimes they report things to a credit bureau. Sometimes, you know, we have to be very cognizant that our employees feel that they can take that sick day to take care of themselves, their family, or whatever it may be, regardless of how the outside, you know, industries are doing it. So, I just think it's extremely critical that we keep this front and center. And if there's an application that we should have submitted or could have submitted, we do it. And then we wait for the guidelines and switch it up.
Jackie, or Superintendent Anderson, is there any, any steps that we can take between now and the 17th to be prepared for making a decision on the 17th?
Jackie, I'll let you answer that one.
We can put together some scenarios and kind of the risk of moving forward with each scenario at this time, whether it's financial or compliance. We can put something together. I, I, I'm not counting on us having guidance from the Department of Labor or IRS by that time.
Well, and I would agree with my fellow board members. I think that we do owe our staff an answer, regardless of what the answer is. I think people need to know. I would be in support of, you know, I, I think that we're in unprecedented times and that, you know, afford some flexibility and we need to hear, you know, and take care of our own. And none of us have been through this before. We haven't been prepared for this, but as much as we can do to support our staff, I would be all for that. So, whatever we can do between now and the 17th, I did put that on my list for our next agenda committee meeting. So, it will definitely be on our next agenda. Hopefully, we can have some actionable item by then or at least have more information to, to make better decisions moving forward. Because you're right, we've been talking about this for two meetings now, three meetings?
About three meetings.
Three meetings without an answer. And that, you're right, we need to make a decision and move forward. So, all right. Any other return to school items you'd like to share, Superintendent Anderson?
No, we have one month to go, so we just want everyone to finish strong. If it's students, staff members, visitors. We want people to follow social distancing. We want people to get vaccinated. We want people to test regularly and wear masks. And, you know, we have one month until the end of the school year, so let's stick together and finish strong.
Well said. All right. Next up on our agenda is Jefferson School Update. Kim Corey, Dean of Students at Jefferson, is joining us with some lovely faces there with her, so I'll turn it over to you, Mrs. Corey.
Good morning and thank you for letting us talk to you. Good morning, good evening. I have some friends with me to introduce their year at, a little bit into Jefferson. And so, I'm going to let them do most of the talking at the beginning. I'm going to ask them some questions off camera, so I'm going to move spots with Julius here, and they're going to introduce themselves to you, okay? All right.
Okay, Julius, you prefer.
All right. Okay, go on up. Julius, introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Julius and I'm in sixth grade.
Can you hear them?
We can.
Okay, talk nice and loud. Okay, DeParis.
My name is DeParis. I go to Jefferson School.
What grade are you in?
I'm in third grade.
And they're brothers, so that's why they're, they're here to talk to you. So I just have some questions that they're going to talk about their experience this year at Jefferson. So DeParis, what is your favorite thing about Jefferson?
Um, that I get to see all the T-shirts that I saw from Burnside. I get to see Ms. Ms. Stokes, Ms. Flynn, and Ms. Lee. Yeah.
Yeah. Julius, what's your favorite thing about Jefferson? Yeah, they like that in the classroom eating stuff, don't you guys?
Julius, um, could you, uh, come a little bit closer to the computer? They've been a problem on my end, but if you won't mind repeating that one more time, I'd really appreciate it.
Like, almost like you're yelling at your brother.
Well, maybe not that loud.
Okay, go ahead. Say again what you loved about, what's your favorite thing about Jefferson?
I like eating in the classroom, so, so that works. I like eating in the classroom, so we don't have to walk all the way down to a cafeteria. And I like having my backpack and stuff in the classroom, so I don't have to run all the way to my locker.
DeParis, what do you love most about school? DeParis also just came to school after being off for a couple of weeks, uh, for online learning. And today he ran around the corner and jumped into teachers' arms because he was so excited to get back to school. What's the thing that you love the most?
That I get to see all the teachers that I know and I like to see them alert.
Julius, what's your favorite thing? Does it have anything to do with outside?
I like playing soccer with my classmates.
I think recess is probably Julius's favorite thing, as he's asked me for what his reward is for doing this, and he said extra recess. So, um, and my last question, DeParis, what's different about, uh, Jefferson than it was for you before?
Um, that you have to wear a mask.
Yeah, not wear a mask. That's right. How about you Julius? How's it going? Is it better? Is it the same? Yeah, so I can't thank you, uh, these, so Julius and DeParis Black Pack, say hi to mom, wave to mom. Cause she's watching. All right, thanks guys.
You guys did great, thank you.
I think all, I'm just going to share my screen, go quickly through the presentation. Um, I think that's okay, right? Okay?
Yeah.
All right. Hopefully it works for you. So this is my Jefferson staff, uh, back in the summer. Uh, when we were first putting up, we found the Jefferson sign after all these years, um, in the basement. So it was repainted and we were really proud of that. Uh, here are some celebrations for us. Of course, this is the school built in 1916. I have a very good friend who came to visit me and she's a watercolor artist and she made a watercolor painting. And probably our best part was we made it onto Saturday Night Live this year. And here's that picture that the one year Jefferson is open. We made it onto, uh, still shot on Saturday Night Live. Uh, another thing is of course, and some of you even maybe on the board, um, maybe even went to Jefferson School, but here's a picture from 1936 brought in, um, by the Regelmans, whose great grandpa or grandpa is this little guy over here in 1936. And this is his great grandson in school today. Uh, of course, the newspaper, Republican Eagle thankfully came and opened us the same year uh, the last global pandemic happened. Just showing some different things of the kids, social distancing this year, learning and playing in the gym. Another thing is our fun spaces. We've turned this thing into, this is our speech space. It's a, it's speech and beach. So Christine Chandler is our speech, uh, para this year, so she's been helped. She helped make it into a, a fun space for the kids. They never miss their speech time. And then here is something that, uh, we call it Team Floks, which is Mandy Stokes and, uh, Jordan Flynn. Turned this into a calming space. Some kids needed some time by themselves. So in Jefferson, there are these nooks and crannies, as you can imagine. And, uh, this is a space that's within the classroom. So if a kid needs a break, they're not losing instructional time, but they're just changing their dynamic of how they're learning or how they're listening and can still be a part of the classroom. These are just different pictures of what we went through. One, one of my favorites was, this was on, uh, one of my teacher's social medias, that we had practiced the tornado drill. And then we forgot to tell the kids at 6:45 that evening, there was going to be another practice drill. And so she got an email from students saying, do I do the same thing that we practiced at school? I thought that was fun. One of the best things we learned this year is our staff goes out for recess on their own time and plays with the kids. So here they are, jump roping four square. In the wintertime, this was an apartment. It wasn't a snow fort, it was a snow apartment and, uh, playing bingo when it's a rainy day downstairs. Things that we wanted to celebrate, um, and the things that we've put into practice this year is this was our philosophy. It was from mine as the dean of students, all the way down to, um, all the classrooms, custodians, staff, uh, office staff. We definitely leaned in. We made it, eh, eh, especially when it was hard, we went that far. And we never let the so what happen? So what? We're all in a global pandemic. So what? We got to move on. And now what are we going to do about it? We never blame, we never shame. We always come to the table with solutions and ideas. And we love those kids hard, as Julius and DeParis showed you tonight. And we chose joy often, always. One of the hardest things for sometimes, um, upper Midwestern people is to hold one another accountable and speak truth. We like to be passive aggressive. We've kind of turned that coin a little bit. We, we say, we've practiced how we let each other know how we're doing and how we're feeling. These are the things that we've learned as of now, May 3rd. Because we are a totals SEL focused staff, things just went better. And as, um, my staff would probably say is it's their best year of teaching, which is not the norm, uh, for this particular year. We always cared for the child first while performing all the duties, still being a teacher, doing the curriculum, those things. Teachers playing with kids during recess and then, um, some of those behavior turnarounds. Like we, we have a lot of, we have a very diverse population here. We're just as diverse as the other four schools. So we've had some major turnarounds by loving them hard and choosing kindness and choosing joy. And I just love this quote by Brene Brown about true belonging. And that's what we've learned here is that we, the kids felt like they belonged and the staff felt like they belonged. So we just came tonight to tell you how much we appreciate you opening Jefferson for us this year and how much fun we've had and, um, the good times and the good memories that we've had and look forward to whatever the future brings going forward. So now, if you have any questions, happy to answer any.
Mrs. Corey, how many, um, students are in Jefferson right now?
About 150. Um, of course, it depends on the quarantine day, as we all know. But about 150, we also house, um, or at least, uh, Jefferson is responsible for the fourth grade online learners. So those, those, uh, 30 or so, maybe 20, however many it is, I think it's like around mid twenties. They also were Jefferson students, so that's what we would do.
So those, uh, fourth grade online kids are included in 150 total?
I think it's around 180 total with, I think it's like 150 in person and, uh, around 180. I'm, I don't have the exact number of today, it changes every day, you know?
Uh, Nikki here, thank you. No, Holly first. Holly first, thank you.
Thank you. Um, tell me about our compliance with ADA over at Jefferson.
Yeah.
And, and when we talk about inclusivity, how does that tie in? And for those of you who don't know what ADA is, is the American With Disabilities Act. Every building that a public school uses has to be ADA compliant.
Yep, and as we know, a good, good question, Holly. Uh, as we know, Jefferson is, does not have an elevator. It doesn't have space. The bathrooms have been retrofitted, so I would say the bathroom, I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's not state of the art with the ADA thing. I would probably ask more of the board of, like, if it was to ever look at forward, what the plan would be for that. But we don't have, um, any need for an elevator at this time. And elevator is what I think of first. We don't have any students or, or any, um, any adults in the building that have any needs at this time, so, um...
Is it possible they don't get to go there because there isn't one?
I can't, I actually don't know that. I can't answer that.
Yeah, the, um, the real issue, like Kim said, is the elevator. There are other ADA issues as well, but the elevator is the most important one. Especially if we, uh, ever decide to keep it open long-term. Uh, we definitely want to add the elevator. The, uh, if there was a child or a staff member, uh, with, uh, a need, uh, like for example, uh, he or she's in a wheelchair or some other reason, uh, then we'd have that class down on first floor instead of second floor, uh, to address that issue. Uh, but there are some, some other ADA issues as well. I know Kevin Johnson has, has his list of, of particular issues with the building.
Yeah, I, I see the joy and the pure happiness of the kids and the staff. I drive by there twice a day. So I see it firsthand and I don't discount, you know, the two, um, teachers that spoke at the beginning. I believe it was heartfelt and genuine and sincere and full of all the love they could bring. Um, my, my biggest concern is finances. We've had to cut some teachers and, um, some staff and, you know, just the piece of the ADA is, is a big piece for me. So I really appreciate you bringing the goodness forward.
Nikki.
Well, I'm a Jefferson parent online, um, and I didn't, you know, cause I'm focused on, you know, doing, um, decisions on a board level and then focusing on my own home. And, um, Kim and I both know, um, but the rest of you may not. And I wanted to share that with you, just so you know, um, but we were struggling. And, um, I asked for help and Kim was, and all the staff was there immediately. They came and they, they created a plan for my son so we could, so he wouldn't fail and so he could keep up while he was going through his medical, um, issues. So, um, I'm very thankful that you were able to, you know, do that. Um, man, you guys really came through like community and it, it's really, um, it's really good to see how, um, both staff and students are, um, responding to your type of leadership in there. And, and I'm, I'm really thankful, I'm impressed and, um, I'm just, uh, with, like you are, I'm really excited to see what the future holds for all students in the public school district. Thank you, Kim.
Thanks, Nikki.
Anna. Thank you so much for sharing, um, and for our speakers today and the, um, emails that we got. I got to sub at Jefferson one day, um, and that was super cool. It's such a cool space to be in, um, from, you know, the, the financial aspect and the ADA aspect. Like, you know, as a board member, keeping Jefferson open is kind of a, oh gosh, I don't know, kind of a thing. But, you know, being in there, you know, and, and hearing from people who are there, I can definitely appreciate how much, um, the space is loved, um, and how much people are enjoying it this year. So, um, I guess the only thing that I just wanted to add was just that, you know, obviously some really great things have happened at Jefferson this year. And if Jefferson isn't able to be part of, you know, be open as a school into the future, how we can bring that sense of community into our other buildings and, um, continue to keep what has worked. When we talk about going back to normal, maybe some things don't need to go back, you know? What, what lessons have we learned that we can keep moving forward?
Yeah, I would probably go on top of that is that, you know, we know, we know, obviously the, the finances, um, I'm probably, I don't think I've missed a board meeting minute in the past, I don't know how many years. Fully aware, there, there is, there is this community that it's not the building for us. And I think our teachers would say it. It, it doesn't matter, we could be in a, in a ram shack out on Hay Creek. Uh, it, it would, it wouldn't change the, I don't think it would change the kids' experience. And obviously keeping this all about student, student, student first, student first. This staff is bar none. I will go to my dying breath about how fantastic they are. Those boys that spoke here, I mean, these are boys, it wasn't like I had to give lollipops and do all these things. And, um, these are some, these are two of 180 kids that we could have asked to come and talk. And my kindergarteners probably would have loved to have talked and it's like keeping, you know, cats inside of a herd of cats, as we say. So I, eh, they're all great. That's what's so great about the Jefferson, I would call it the Jefferson story, is that it isn't about the space. And I, I hear, I mean, we can't, you can't go away from it. I mean, if my child was in a wheelchair, yes, would they probably, we'd have to, right? There'd be huge things that would come up with that. But that child that would be in a wheelchair, and I hate to say just wheelchair, because I'm thinking of an elevator. It could be, it could be multiple different disabilities. Their experience, we would have wrapped it. Like, let's just say that was our only option for that child, which it's not. We would, the, the, my staff would have built stuff just to make sure that that kid felt as included. So it is really about this teaching staff. Phenomenal, phenomenal. And it's Teacher Appreciation Week and I'm not just saying that.
Superintendent Anderson?
Yeah, you kind of, uh, hinted at already, uh, Kim, you know, obviously there's school leadership, there's a teaching staff, community, uh, buy-in and support. Uh, what about class sizes? Was that a big factor in developing community throughout Jefferson and the rest of the district?
I would say, I would say at Jefferson, my teachers could have had 25 and they would have had the same experience. Class sizes, however, being half is ginormously, and that's a great word for me to use, I guess. It has made a, an incredible impact. They can get to all 12 of those kids or all 14 of those kids every single day, every single lesson. Talk about finances, is that, you know, really sustainable? But that, I, I know, I can speak that as a PLC leader for the two grades that I worked with this year, first and second. That's what made the changes. The class size going from 22 to 23, sure, or 23, but 22 to 11? You bet. It's been fantastic. So I, I, I appreciate all of this board, you know, investing in our kids' experience this year for them to have a great, great year during COVID, even during distance learning. I can't imagine trying to distance teach with 25 kindergartners all at once. So I really appreciated that for the class sizes for those times.
Holly.
Um, I just want to say, I really appreciate you bringing it back around to the staff. That you could have done this in a ice shed, you know, up at the athletic field. And you would have had that caring, loving, compassionate approach to kids and what they needed. And, you know, I went to St. Joe's, which was built just like Jefferson. And I loved my small class sizes. Every time I drive by Jefferson, I think of, you know, my old schoolhouse that was, had the cloakrooms and the little cubbies and places where, you know, we could, you know, just be kids. And I wish every kid could have that experience and it's not possible anymore. So what you said about the staff making it come true for kids, I would really like to see more of that. And I'm not saying it's not happening at other sites, but that's, that's the emotion and that's the energy I would love to see all throughout Red Wing. So thank you for bringing that to the forefront so that other people can, you know, okay, so Jefferson did what?
Yeah, thank you Holly. That, um, because when we thought about our Jefferson story to share with you, um, and I had met with the teachers last week and, and we, we talked through just that part. Well, wait a minute, we all have small class sizes, right? Everywhere has small class sizes, meaning in Red Wing right now. Um, what, what made a difference? And it really was that we were all committed to one another, no matter what. So, um, Anna couldn't say she was here on the rain day, unfortunately. And if it meant that Anna couldn't sub at that time, that didn't matter. I'd have seven people who would say, I'll do it, I'll do it, I'll do it. And they don't, um, hold grudges, they lift each other up. It's, I, I'm, I'm here just to kind of drive the car, but they're the ones that make it fun and make it, and the Julius and DePerris wouldn't say Mrs. Corey is their favorite. They would say the other, they would say, because I don't really, I don't see them that often, right? That's not, their teachers are, who's making it for them.
Well, and I think, uh, you know, I took down some notes about all the things that we have learned about that building. I remember uh, back last fall when teachers at the very last minute had to switch classrooms and all of a sudden they had a day or two to move to Jefferson and get their classroom set up and ready. And I remember walking the halls and seeing eleven desks in a, in a classroom and thinking, this is how it should be. Right? If we were able to give that experience to every single kid, how different things would be. And so I'm so glad that you were able to give that community experience for our families and our kids. I think that we've heard loudly and clearly from many, many letters and phone calls that we've received, how wonderful that experience has been. So huge thank yous to you, Mrs. Corey and your team there because, um, you've made, uh, you know, lemonade out of lemons this year. So, thank you for that. And I, I, I think, uh, if there was any way that we could move forward in keeping that model uh, in our district, we would jump on that in a heartbeat. So.
Yeah, I do, I do. One last thing is that, you know, I, this could be, I could be Chris, I could be Jen, I could be Mike. We all could be here doing the same thing right now, because there's great staff everywhere and there's great leadership everywhere. Um, it, it's just because Jefferson is, right, the one that we knew was going to be out, maybe. So I know that Mike could have done the same pres- presentation and Chris and Jen. So, uh, I, I can't thank them. They've been am- amazing. I mean, uh, we just, we're really happy. We're just celebrating Jefferson, knowing that our future is a little uncertain where theirs is not so much. So, um, I, again, thank you for opening it up. Um, it was interesting because most of my teachers were not happy to come to Jefferson, um, as they all know, because no one wanted to make the big move. And at that time, gosh, you guys think back to August. Um, so, I'm just, I'm thankful. It's been fantastic and we'll see where we go.
Many thanks. Anything else for Mrs. Corey? All right.
Thanks for everything, yeah.
Thanks, everybody.
And thanks Zach and Mandy for joining us.
All right, school board reports. I'm just going to go down my list as it's listed here. Uh, any updates from finance?
That was me, yes. An update from finance was, I wrote it down over here. Um, the fact that we do not have the final numbers for one of the CARES checks, correct Jackie?
Yeah, S R three funding is still being allocated.
Yes, S R three, so we don't have the final numbers for that. We have S R two funding allocated to exact spots with exact numbers, almost to a T. And, um, I think the big question out there is what are we going to do when we find out the next amount? And how is that going to impact everything that we do forward? And we don't know. That, you know, we just don't know. We, and we have, you know, the administrative team has put together some ideas of how they would like it to be spent or what they're hoping it can, you know, cover. But I think, once again, once we get the final number and then the finance committee can go through it, we'll know more. There were no recommendations coming from the finance committee in terms of any actionable items. Um, so Jim's not here, but Nikki, is there anything you'd like to add about the finance?
No, you pretty much covered everything, Holly.
Why, thank you. Jackie?
I think you covered it. It was a lot of reports.
Yes, a lot of reports. We did talk about how many students were down from last year, and maybe we just want to tell the public that again. How many students are we down from last year?
It's over a hundred and fifty. I don't have the exact number in front of me. And we're about seven to eight students off a budget right now. Positive, though.
Yes, so we're maintaining with a little up, but we are still down quite a bit of money in that realm, which is heartbreaking, right? And so we do talk about wh- what can we do to bring kids back? And I think we've got some answers on my next board report with G C E D, but I'll wait for that turn.
Good. Operations, any updates? Mr. Bryant is not here, but anybody else on the committee have any updates they'd like to share?
You know, I can just briefly run through it. Um, the, uh, Brent Lexhold shared his list of food service equipment that, uh, we're purchasing. Uh, we're being, uh, pretty aggressive with that area because of the a strong fund balance in the food and service department, plus some better pricing than what we usually see, like for ovens and dishwashers because there hasn't been the demand. So we're being aggressive, but it's within his budget. Uh, we talked about the Twin Bluff Playground and some transportation issues, so, uh, more about that in future meetings.
Okay. Uh, personnel, we met this evening. We talked about, uh, within the special education programming, we have due process facilitators. And so, uh, we talked about that. Um, we spent some time on succession planning for, uh, if or when we would ever have to fill in, uh, a superintendent position due to leave or illness or a catastrophic event. So in the case that anything happens, we will have a plan in place. We won't have to try and uh, build the plane as we fly it as much. We'll have a little bit of an outline that we can follow. So we've been working on that and you will be seeing that shortly. Um, and then we talked about our, our permanent substitutes. Uh, we did hire five?
Uh, we have about seven or eight total.
Seven, right. We started with five and then we added a couple of more. And, um, we talked about how hard of a call that was to make, because this has been a difficult year to fill in substitutes, uh, positions. And, uh, we've we've had, um, more success than many because of that, uh, hiring, uh, positions. Uh, anything else I missed, many? That was the three main things on our agenda tonight.
Um, I think, other than, we weren't going to bring anything to the board May seventeenth around the suc- sorry, my brace is succession planning. Um, we're going to review it again at our next personnel committee and then bring back what the committee kind of looks at in June. I think it was June seventh, we meet again.
Sounds good. Yes. You will be seeing that in the future. Uh, anything, updates from legislative and policy committee?
No update. We didn't meet. That was four weeks or three weeks ago last night.
Uh, negotiations. We did receive a notice, uh, the last week that, um, the teachers are ready to begin their negotiations. So that will be starting here coming up. And then we continue to work with, um, the cooks and custodians. Uh, equity team, I believe, is meeting next week. That got pushed back a week. And, well. Any updates on community ed advisory council?
No, a couple weeks, um, a couple weeks, yeah.
Okay. And then G C E D?
Uh, yes, we did meet and we spent a lot of time talking about the online school for Good Hugh County. Now, I haven't reviewed that with this board, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I've had so many meetings in the last week that my head is spinning with who I've talked to, so I apologize. But there's going to be one administrator from, for all of Good Hugh County schools. All students will go to that online school. We talked about who gets the money for a student that attends the online school and it will be their home district. So if there's twenty kids from Lake City and thirty kids from Red Wing, that money would still go into Red Wing and it would still go into Lake City. Does that make sense? Uh, we talked about class sizes and hiring staff. And, um, Sherry was saying that she's, you know, the cap at class sizes was forty kids. And I was saying that's very, very high for an online experience for kids. Um, and I was hoping that if she needed to ask for more staff, she would be willing to do that and not max teachers out at forty students. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but that was something I personally felt was, you know, pretty important. Um, what else about the online school? They need to hire a principal. And that has been posted. Carson, can you help me?
Oh, yeah, just as far as the, uh, the class size limit of forty, uh, that's a state requirement. So by law, we have to follow it. But we don't want thirty-eight kids in a class. You know, we would definitely advocate for having two classrooms in that case. So Holly and I, 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 I think all of us are seeing it the same way.
Okay, good. Um, yeah, I think that's kind of the bulk of what that entailed.
Holly, this is, can I just ask you a question?
Yeah.
Is it, um, what are the grade levels for the online school?
From my understanding, it's K twelve.
Correct.
And, and I think I asked if it was early childhood twelve, but I think it's K twelve for now. And then looking at, if, if it needs to expand, it could expand in different ways. I mean, there could be a bubble of fifth graders and no second graders. You know, there'll have to be, and we did not talk about teachers teaching two or three grade levels, but I'm sure that will come up. If a teacher, you know, if there's not enough kids or there's, you know, too many kids, somebody might have to take a carryover. So there could be a lot of nuances in and out about how all that structured. Sherry didn't seem to think that we were going to have a ton of kids apply, you know, a normal amount. But she felt like the staffing that she was allocating was sufficient. And that's where I was just like, make sure that teachers aren't overloaded. Arlen, did you have a question?
Yeah, a little bit on, uh, the teachers. You know, I challenged, uh, our administration, uh, that I would like to see is, as a school district, come up with their own online school. I thought that's where we were headed, and then all of a sudden it's coming back into the end district. And the last I had heard is that it might be that Red Wing School District hires all or most of the teachers because we would have a majority of the people in those classes and then work it through there. So I'm just wondering, who is hiring the teachers? Is it going to be by local district or, or is it by us and then an agreement back and forth? Give some elaboration on that.
Um, that's, those are really good questions, Arlen. And from my understanding is Sherry was going to hire the staffing, am I wrong, Carson? With an advisory team of superintendents from three different sites?
Yeah, I know that, um, uh, that G C D will be hiring the principal. And then some teachers might be hired by us, some by G C E D, it kind of depends. So, uh, Sherry's going to be here in May for a workshop session, so we'll go over some of those in detail. But I'll give you two scenarios that might explain why there'd be a difference. Uh, we have about, let's say, a hundred and eighty kids in one of our grades. Uh, and so we have so many teachers assigned to that grade. If twenty of them choose online, then we would advocate to have one of our teachers serve as that online teacher. So that teacher would be employed by Red Wing Schools, you know, uh, you know, to follow through those twenty kids. Uh, if we have a full slate, you know, let's say, no, no Red Wing kids uh, are in the online school, but we get twenty from Good Hugh, let's say, then Good Hugh Public Schools might hire the teacher or G C E D. So it kind of depends on on the numbers of kids and, and our own particular class sizes.
I think it's extremely complex. And so I really appreciate your questions, Arlen, because they haven't been answered. And what Carson is saying in those scenarios may seem like a good idea. And then for some financial reason, they may not be a good idea. We may be taking the brunt of a financial, you know, piece in, in some capacity. If, you know, we're with thirty kids and Lake City has a sprinkle of two and Good Hugh has a couple, you know, maybe not Lake City, but you, you, I don't have the answers and I don't think that there are answers yet.
Yeah, I think that's a fair thing to do. And then, kind of getting to the, um, complex nature of things. Uh, yeah, you know, I think it also comes down to a question of supervision because it would be the G, it's a G C D program, uh, G C D principal. Uh, but, you know, we could have teachers from different, um, school districts or Red Wing and G C D could be employed. And so that really complicates things.
And especially with different contracts.
Right.
Right? Because they're not going to be under a G C E D contract for teaching and parent support. They're going to be under what contract?
Right. And, uh, really we'll know so much more after we know how many kids sign up and where they're residing. So I wish we had answers now, but we don't.
And I, I just want to say this and piggyback on Arlen. Um, Arlen, I, I agree with you. I would like to see Red Wing go down the path of creating their own online school. And I'm just putting that on the record. I don't know how realistic and feasible it is in the next year. I'm not saying it, it shouldn't or couldn't happen. I, I would like that. Um, but in the next year, the amount of work that had to go in and applying to be in online school or to get an online school going was a tremendous effort by three different administrators over at G C E D. So I know Jen Grove was working on something for Red Wing, and I don't know if she gave that information over to Sherry or if she's kept it in-house with us, Carson. But I know that she was doing some work on that also. I just know it's a tremendous undertaking.
Yeah, both, uh, Jen Grove and Kim Corey were, were working on it. Uh, G C D started their application process, I think, last August or September. Uh, and so that's why G C D got approved in March, uh, which is a huge advantage for us. Uh, we probab- if we would have submitted our own application, it prob- probably would have been determined this summer, which would have made it really tough for us to, to get things running. So it's timing, it's resource allocation. Um, you know, one thing, as we were starting to develop our, our application, uh, we had some questions about G C D's model. Uh, and G C D was very flexible in changing their model. So instead of a four through twelve school, at our request, it became a K twelve school, which was really important. Uh, there were some questions about what curriculum would be used, especially at the elementary school. Uh, but G C D, uh, I think largely because most of the students will be Red Wing kids, they agreed to letting us use the Wonders curriculum, uh, which we think is really important. We're very confident in the use of that curriculum and we want continuity between grades. Uh, and so we're very pleased with that change. Uh, and so, you know, they were flexible. You know, they made some adjustments based on our particular needs, which, which made us feel good. And, uh, and so in the end, we decided not to pursue the application because we thought it would be better to, to work on it together with those changes.
Arlen?
Yeah, if I may continue on here. I think this is a point of vision and leadership, and I'm not saying that we could have got this all done in one year, but I see so many advantages for us to run our own program and have an online school that's the Red Wing identity. And the possibility of running a part-time, I'm sure it could work with G C D too. Uh, maybe half a day involved with, uh, online learning, the other half coming in to use our, our wood shop or our music department or whatever it might be. But if we were to de- design an online school, like people, you see advertised on TV, we could keep all the revenue for kids coming in from other districts. We could be a model for other districts that, that say, why didn't we think of that and get that going? We got the ability. That, that say, why didn't we think of that and get that going? We got the ability. If we set that vision, we'll know that around. Um, I know GCED did a lot of stuff to get things approved for this upcoming year with the online learning. We were on variance, I believe, last fall trying to do some things with our online learning because of COVID, but it's up to the rest of the board. What I think doesn't matter by myself, but it's up to the rest of the board. If they wanna put that vision out here, then we should do our own thing. I would urge all of our board members to think about this and say, are we just gonna follow or are we gonna lead? And I think this is an area where we really can step out and lead because we don't. We're not gonna lose our students to GCED. We're still gonna get our revenues. We're gonna lose them to these schoo- schools that are advertised on TV and uh, magazines and all these other places that, well, I guess advertised on the internet. We're gonna lose our students to them. And we got the ability, let's kick it out there. Let's get it going in our district. There's my pep talk. I'll talk to the rest of the board and see if they have that to say, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Arlen.
Nikki?
I agree with Arlen. Um, you know, let them come in for the specials, wood shop, music, art. Um, get them outside, get them outside, get them outside. So that I'll just, I'll just advocate for that part, the outside part. Well, Arlen, thank you for advocating for the first part.
Go ahead, Preston.
Yeah, and kind of piggybacking on what both Arlen and Nikki said, um, I think the shared time arrangements is really important. Uh, if there could be digital curriculum or digital classes in addition to the hands-on classes. Uh, because that differentiates this program or Red Wing's program, whatever program, from all the others. Uh, and if we can, you know, we, we have such great offerings in the hands-on courses. And so if we can tie that in with, with some digital offerings, I think that's the, the best of both worlds. So that's a top priority for us. Um, you know, I will say that other schools have had online schools for um, programs for years. Uh, and uh, you know, our goal now is to make the Five Rivers Online, which is the aim for this program, the best possible uh, program because we want our kids to stay in Red Wing, uh, because we're in a better program than what they can find elsewhere. You know, they'll, our, our parents will have access not only to hands-on classes, but to field trips, to prom, to athletics, you know, to everything else that ties them to Red Wing. And so we just have to make that happen.
Holly?
Um, as we move this forward in terms of where we wanna take Red Wing, I would be open to having, and I know this is a big thing, but having another ad hoc committee that does report on how online is being structured through GCED and how that ties into Red Wing and what the road mo- roadblocks might be and areas that we can continue to push forward and look at doing our own online school. I feel like if we just kind of, and then it goes off to the side, other things could take precedence. So it's a way to keep us, keep, you know, that front and center. Um, but I know adding another committee is a lot of responsibility and we don't have the time for everything always, but you know, I would be willing to jump on that.
Thank you, Holly. We will have, as a board, um, a dedicated time to learning everything, all the nicks and crannies of uh, this online school. That will be our next workshop topic coming up at the end of the month. And so Sherry will be here uh, to give us a presentation on what's happening, how it's gonna be structured, how they're doing with um, staffing. Um, there might even be a video to show you um, their vision. So um, I think we'll learn a whole lot more before June hits and um, you know, I, I think, I think those, those concerns and ideas are really valid, Arlen and Holly. I mean, I, I think that's how we started this train out. Um, it's kind of morphed into something different, but um, I, I think if we can let Sherry show us um, kind of her vision and uh, what's, what's happening, what has happened, what's happening um, at the end of the month and uh, keep those wheels turning. Anything else on that? Go ahead, okay, go ahead.
Uh, once, one part I forgot to say when I was just uh, speaking before. Take a look at where we've come in the last year with our digital learning. And it was Ben Barber Plan going along, but it's not just us. Every school in the state has gone to a online learning at some point, I believe. Take a look at it. I'm old, but I'm young enough to realize we're not gonna continue teaching the way we taught last year. Certain components of that will stay in person. But we're headed into online learning. Every district is gonna be heading into online learning more and more every year. And this past year with COVID has accelerated that whole process drastically. And we can either be a leader or a follower. If you're gonna be a follower, you're gonna be left behind. So that's where I'm gonna leave it.
Yeah, and uh, I'll only add that we can be a leader with others. And so I think that's the difference, uh, possibly in, in uh, perspective. Uh, cause I think Five Rivers Online, uh, with Red Wing and other member schools could be outstanding. So uh, that's, that's my, that's my statement.
Pam, can I just?
Yes, go ahead, Jennifer.
This is Jennifer, um, I, just about that, I was thinking at our workshop, will we have the opportunity to give ideas to Sherry of things that we might want to see included in the online school if she doesn't bring them up, if they're not already?
Yeah, in fact, um, I'll talk to Sherry because I'm wondering if we can get some of those comments or suggestions before the meeting so that we can be ready for that. And, you know, also during the meeting, but it'd be nice to have some of that beforehand.
All right, any other committees that anyone would like to report on before we move to administrative reports? Anything else, anyone? All right, then Superintendent Anderson, back to you for administrative reports.
All right, I'm just taking some notes here. Great. Uh, you know, everything's listed in the board package, so I won't go over, you know, every item in detail, uh, but I'm always here for questions. Uh, first of all, Donna Latu, uh, Langhans, uh, the, the Red Wing High School Head Cook was named the district recipient of this year's Rotary Club's Service Above Self Award. It's a really nice honor and Donna uh, deserves that honor uh, for her work uh, this year and for the last five or six years that she's been the head cook. So the uh, award ceremony is tomorrow at the St. James. And uh, I'm really excited for that. It's a special day uh, put on by the Rotary Club. On April nineteenth, uh, there was a student walkout. We talked about it a little bit at the last board meeting. Uh, but if you have any more questions, you know, feel free to ask. Uh, there was also, um, you know, I think uh, an appropriate response to the guilty verdicts in the Chauvin trial. Uh, and uh, you can see what the school district did, uh, as far as a response. Uh, things went very well here. Uh, and uh, and so I'm proud of our students and staff for how uh, that was handled. Uh, there was a question about um, the reach program uh, for next year and how the budget reconciliation process impacted that program. It will look different, uh, but Principal Nemec explained that he, he wants to maintain the social emotional learning aspects of the program while adding some in-school credit recovery um, options for kids. So he's still working on staffing, so I don't have the specifics yet, but I'm hoping that uh, Mr. Nemec could come to a a meeting, give a report on that, you know, after some of those things are finalized. So I would imagine probably in June, maybe July, but probably June, he could come and do that. Uh, there is a public hearing on May fifth. Uh, you know, about how uh, the district uses federal Title Six dollars to provide services to our American Indian children. Again, this is a federal requirement. We have to have a public hearing. And it's really, the, the main thrust is for the school district officials to hear feedback from parents. You know, those kids impacted. So that's the primary purpose. I did post it um, as a potential quorum for board members. There won't be discussions or really participation, you know, because we're hearing from the public. Um, you know, so you're invited to, to listen, uh, but um, you know, it's not required in any way. Uh, we take that feedback as we uh, consider revising the Title Six application uh, each year. It's about thirty thousand dollars in revenue. For many years, we've used almost everything on reimbursing parole in Indian, Indian community for the liaisons that they have in our schools. So um, that's uh, what we've done in the past. And that's our proposal for this year too. I did list uh, kind of the pros and cons of location of the Twin Block Playground. I know we talked about that at the last board meeting. And so Alan Gayler provided me uh, the pros and con list that's uh, included in the, the report there. Uh, oh, another notice, uh, our first student bus company was sold to a company in Sweden. Uh, so you'll probably see some news releases in July and August. Uh, it was, first student was spotted in its entirety. Uh, and there's not a, another bus company owned by this company. So we fully anticipate that uh, the level of service and personnel will stay the same. Uh, but I wanted to report out to you in case you start seeing the news and have some questions. So we're very confident that uh, there will not be a significant impact on the school district if anything. Uh, also, uh, Pam, do you wanna go over the superintendent evaluation part?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So um, the superintendent and Vice Chair Bryant and I have been talking about uh, the mid-year uh, superintendent evaluation. Uh, we've put together a uh, survey, if you will, that will be, I will be sending out tomorrow to you and I would ask that you take some time to read through it and fill it out and submit it by five PM next Monday. That'd be the tenth. And the reason I ask for that is because Jim and I are meeting on the eleventh to review those results and put together um, some discussion because on the seventeenth, May seventeenth, which is our next board meeting, we will be having a closed session to go through those results with the superintendent at that time. And it is mine and Mr. Bryant's intention that the public summary then will be shared on June seventh. So that's kind of the timeline for that. Um, the mid-year evaluation is just to dip your toe in the water, kind of, uh, how are things going? It's not the full-blown evaluation that we do in the uh, late fall. Um, but the survey will include the goals that the uh, board put forward for the superintendent last November along with um, the strategic directions. Because um, he is in charge of the district and how those, those things are handled. So um, we'll be able to give him some feedback on uh, the seventeenth. Any questions on that? Okay, oh.
I do, yeah. Um, I'm hearing two. I'm hearing a survey and I'm hearing mid-year evaluation.
Yes, the survey is a mid, the, the mid-year evaluation is a survey. Um, there's, we, there's four goals listed and then the strategic directions. Each of those items are listed and then you can um, eh, uh, rate how the superintendent is doing on each of those on a five-point scale.
Is this different than what has been filled out in the past?
Yes, and hopefully better. Um, last year's midterm evaluation, we had, if you remember, red, yellow, green. Only three ways to rate um, the superintendent's evaluation. This time, we're doing, using, going back to the five-point scale, which is what we used in November. So we'll be saying the same numbers instead from now on. It's more consistent. So it's that five-point scale, effective, highly effective, effective.
Developing.
Developing.
Needs improvement and not using.
Yeah, not effective.
Is it, is it, is it tied to the MSBA?
Yes.
And so they put this out?
Or actually, there's a, a slight difference, um, and that is uh, right now, we have the two evaluations of me each year. Uh, the one in the fall is, is almost entirely based on the School Board Association uh, evaluation instrument. That's what Pam is referring to. This one is based on the uh, the, the education plan and other goals that the uh, school board, you know, is giving.
So who developed this survey?
It was, eh, well, I'm the one who kind of drafted it. Uh, but then Pam and Jim took a look at it, uh, just
This morning. We met to review the um, what will be sent out. Um, and, and again, this mid-year evaluation, this is the second time that we've ever done a mid-year evaluation. We decided that it's really important to, to not just be evaluating one time a year. We should be checking in with the superintendent on a regular basis. If we're setting goals for the superintendent, then we should be monitoring how those are going. So this is our opportunity to say, these are the goals we set for you in November. How are they going? Have you made progress on them? Have you not made progress?
Right, I, I get the reason for the mid-year. I get that. Uh, my question is around the actual survey and how it was vetted and, you know, how are we looking at it in terms of legalities and different components like that? I mean, cause you don't just send out a survey to evaluate a teacher because I made up a survey. Like, it's like a formal process.
Which is why I wanted to go back to using the five-point scale. The five-point scale is what we've used for um, the, the full evaluation in November. Um, and so we're, it's, it's the same, it's the same concept of, you know, looking at and tabulating numbers. Is he highly effective? Is he not effective? Um, so hopefully it will work out. This is a work in progress. This is only the second time we've ever done a mid, mid-year evaluation. So um, I think the biggest takeaway and the biggest piece right now is um, to review those goals for the superintendent and to have a dialogue with him in a closed session at our next board meeting to give him feedback. Cause bottom line is, we wanna be able to say, things are going well in these areas. Things are not going well in these areas. Here's some areas for growth and improvement. We need to see X, Y, and Z at the next evaluation.
Okay, so I'll follow it up with this question. Besides you, Jim and Carson, who else has reviewed the survey?
Nobody that I know of.
Correct.
That doesn't feel right to me. Help me understand how that's a legal evaluation. Help me understand how that's best practice. Help, help me understand that. And I'm not questioning the mid-year reason.
Yeah, I'm not sure where the legality questions are. I mean, I can certainly call the lawyer in the morning if you'd like and run it by him and see. I, I'm not really sure why there's an issue with legality. This is a board that's evaluating its employee. Right?
Right, but we all didn't have input on the survey. So, so there's, there's multiple kind of layers. Like, when we look at the MSBA survey, we, we were, you know, like, this is what it is. This is kind of like, oh, here you go. Here's a survey we developed. And I'm not saying it's not good. It could be phenomenal. It just, it, it just feels kind of put together and, and for good reason because you, because of the colors of the last one. I, I'm just maybe run it by the attorney?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. And again, like I said, this is the second time ever that this board has done a midterm.
Yeah.
And um, when we decided a couple of years ago to institute a mid-year evaluation, what we wanted to do is to just focus on what the goals were that we, that the board set out for the superintendent. So the purpose of this evaluation is to look at those goals and on a five-point scale, how is he doing on those goals? Is he highly effective? Is he effective? Is he not effective? You'll see the fi- the five-point scale. And then every goal will have, there's a open box that you can comment on um, what the superintendent's goal was and how you think he is doing on that.
Did, and, and nobody from M- MSBA reviewed it?
No.
Is that common, Carson? Do you know?
You know, I um, I really don't know. The um, what we're trying to do is follow the the, the general gist of the guidance that MSBA uh, developed a few years ago. Uh, in previous years, you know, there's just one evaluation each year is always based on this uh, evaluation instrument that MSBA had developed. Uh, but then they came out with this guidance suggesting two evaluations each year. And so we're roughly following that. Um, but we have two different types. So we have, you know, the, the one in the fall that's based uh, primarily on the, the School Board Association Evaluation Instrument. We're still using that one. And then the one in the spring is based on progress towards education plan, uh, and other goals. So, but MSBA didn't develop this particular survey or evaluation instrument.
And if you'd like, Holly, I can certainly call Gail Gilman in the morning. She's the one that's helped us. And if you'd like, Holly, I can certainly call Gail Gilman in the morning. She's the one that's helped us with our superintendent evaluations and have us by her as well.
I, I think that would probably be a a good idea. Just, just because it's, I didn't, I didn't realize it was going to be not related but related. Because the last one with the colors, you want to show growth in ways that you can measure it. But if we change surveys. So anyways, Arlen's in the queue.
Go ahead, Arlen.
Yeah, I, I think this is getting way overthought. And I'm sorry if I offend anybody by saying that.
I can't hear you, Arlen.
I think this is getting way overthought and I'm sorry if I offend anybody when I say this, but it is our duty to, right? Uh, meeting with the superintendent and evaluating his progress and there's on our goals that we've set. And it sounds to me like the survey is going to say, what, what, what were our goals and characters we'd like you to do? And you're going to have us rate them. And if that's not enough, I, that's just the way. If we don't like the survey, we can do another one, I guess. But, uh, I don't see what the legality part of this is coming up. I sure hope we aren't paying for another legal opinion. I guess it's through the M S B A we're okay on. I'm just ready to have a survey and let's take it and see where it goes.
I will call Dawn in the mor- or, uh, Gail Gilman in the morning and talk to her about it. She's the superintendent, uh, no, it's not Dawn. I will, I will call M S B A tomorrow and get their opinion on it. I will send them our survey and see if they have any feedback for us before I send that out to you. All right. Anything else, Superintendent Anderson?
Uh, that's all I have except for the upcoming, uh, meetings. And in particular, we have the equi- or the, um, online learning as a board workshop, uh, in May. And then we've had a few different, uh, possibilities as far as workshops this summer. Uh, one has to do with, uh, slurs, racial slurs and otherwise, uh, that I think we need to to really chat about. Uh, but we need to to make sure we have the information that we need, uh, and some expertise, I think, to help us, you know, go through that process. Uh, so don't be surprised if that's a suggestion sometime this summer. Uh, and, uh, you know, again, I'm, I'm hoping we can have three to five or even up to six, you know, workshops focused on equity, uh, you know, over the next twelve months because I think it's a really important topic. Yeah, and, uh, anyway, that's all I have besides, uh, uh, what's listed in the report.
All right. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything that they would like to pull from the consent agenda? All right, I see no, nobody in the queue. So then I'm looking for motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Who was that?
I think it's Holly.
All right, motion, we'll give it to you, Holly. Motion made by Holly, seconded by Anna. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, then we will take a roll call vote, starting with you, Ms. Tower.
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. So the consent agenda passes six to zero. All right, donations and grants.
All right, let me find the right page here. I was jumping ahead in my agenda. Uh, we have a five-hundred-dollar donation from the Red Wing Foundation for the Winger Flight Path Program. And, uh, they, uh, the school foundation, uh, donate so much to the school district and we're so appreciative of this additional, uh, grant.
Aye. Anna will make a motion to approve the resolution accepting donations and grants.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Anna for second. Any other, uh, comments, questions, discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call vote to accept the resolution accepting donations and grants, starting with Ms. Tiff.
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. So that passes six to zero. Up, oh. We, M O U has been taken off of the agenda. So the last thing is future topics and upcoming meetings. Uh, we've kind of talked about all that already. The hearing this week, May seventeenth is a school board meeting. The twenty-fourth is, um, the next workshop. And then all of our committees are listed in the board packet. Any other meetings or upcoming events that people would like to highlight?
We have not determined the, um, topic for the June workshop, correct? Twenty, it's still to be determined.
Yeah, so if you have some suggestions for that, things that are, uh, prior, higher priority for you, let us know. Uh, we review that list pretty much every time that, uh, we meet for the agenda committee. So definitely let us know. All right, with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Holly, adjourn second? Or was that you, Nikki?
No, that was Holly, but I'll second, I'll second that.
Okay, Nikki's going to second. Fabulous. We'll take a roll call vote, starting with you, Ms. Buck.
Aye.
Ms. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are adjourned at seven thirty-seven. Thank you, everybody.
See you all later.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Bye, everyone.